Good evening. My name is Chris Pia. Today is Monday, June 14, 2021. This is a public hearing I am calling to order at 6:15 PM on the regularly scheduled for a lease of a portion of this town property located on Chapel Street for the construction of a monopole cell tower. I will open it up to see if there are any speakers signed up for the public hearing. Ms. Paquette will check.
Hold, please.
There is no one signed up.
Okay, council clerk has stated that there is no one signed up. Is there anybody else in the room who would like to speak who has not had the opportunity to sign up? Seeing none, I will close this public hearing at 6:16 PM. Okay, we're going to begin tonight's public forum. Ms. Paquette is going to grab the list. My name is Chris Pia, council chair. Today is Monday, June 14, 2021. It is 6:45 PM and Ms. Paquette is bringing the list up. If anybody hasn't signed up who would like to speak who has not signed up.
Linda, we're not signing up?
Bring it up, Margon. I'll make one more announcement before the end, too. Okay, the first person signed up is Dr. Andrew Warren. Is that you, sir? Come on up to the podium. And, you know, it's been a little while, so the rules for public forum are you have three minutes, sir, to speak about what you'd like to in town. If you could just state your name and address in the microphone and we'll give you the floor.
Very good, so I can start?
You may start.
Okay, very good. Just this afternoon, I picked up on the Internet an article printed actually today by East County Magazine, June 14, 2021, "Dangers of Living Near Cell Phone Towers Raised." And they point out that there was three studies. One Australian study found that children living near the cell towers developed leukemia at three times rate of children living over seven miles away. Now, the German study found that those living within quarter of a mile from the tower tripled their rate of cancer. And the Israeli study found that people living within a quarter of a mile from the cell tower had, let's see, quadrupled rate of cancer versus those people who are living few miles away. So that poses the danger primarily to the children's developing brains and are all within a quarter of a mile, several hundred children. Some of them may be very close to the tower because the tower would be on the grass, on the stadium on which they play. There is also one less likely but possibility that lightning strikes occur much more often near the cell tower than otherwise. Therefore, I ask and hope that to protect our children and other citizens who are living just across the street were not exposed to that tower. By the way, my doctorate is in astrophysics. I am a aerospace scientist. I'm not a physician, but I am familiar with those things. Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Could you just state your name and address for the record, sir?
Andrew Warren, 65 Mill Drive.
Thank you very much, Dr. Warren.
Thank you.
Much appreciated. Is there anybody else present who would like to speak who has not had the opportunity to sign up? Go ahead, Linda. Nope. No problem. Just name and address if you can and we'll get you going, just for the record.
Linda Palermo, 46 Watt Place. Of course, that's Stratford. I have, I believe, only one question at this time to ask because we haven't had these meetings in a while this way. On previous agendas, when it brought up the section where it says Town Attorney's Report, and I may be saying this a little backwards, it also gave the mayor to act in behalf of the town attorney if there was nothing there. I'd like to know if that's going to be part of the format you're going to be using. That's all I want to know. Okay, thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you. Is there anybody else present who would like the opportunity to speak who has not signed up? I don't see any hands. Again, anybody present, one last opportunity? No? Okay. I'll call the public forum close at 6:50. Good evening, everyone. My name is Chris Pia. Today is June 14, 2021. It is 8 PM and I will be calling to order the regularly scheduled Stratford Town Council meeting. Hello?
Can you reach yourself, please?
The first item on the agenda, I'm going to ask for the invocation and pledge by Councilwoman Dancho from the 10th District, please.
Lord, we ask for your blessings as we are gathered together on this anniversary of celebrating the one flag of our one nation under God. We thank you for the men and women who helped form our great nation so today we can stand united. On this Flag Day, we pray for guidance in the matters at hand and ask that you show us how to conduct our work in the spirit of patriotism as demonstrated by our forefathers. Please continue to shed your grace upon us and give us the desire to find ways to excel in our work and encourage each other to excellence. For this, we give you thanks and praise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the revolution which stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with the religion and justice of God.
Thank you, Ms. Dancho. First item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the regularly scheduled meeting of May 10, 2021, and the special meeting from June 1, 2021. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Councilman O'Brien. Do I have a second?
Mr. Pia.
Seconded by Councilman Connor. Any discussion on the approval? Nope. Hearing none. We'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed. Motion passes eight to zero. Mr. Harden is absent and Mr. Perla stepped out for a moment. He'll be returning. Next item on the agenda is under item 3.1, we have a letter of resignation for informational purposes only by Mrs. Gladys Ramos. Mrs. Ramos was, I'd say, promoted and honored to be moved to a lifetime member and she was my Spanish teacher growing up, so I love Mrs. Ramos. She taught me how to speak somewhat decent Spanish, so congrats to her. Next item on the agenda is item 3.2, another monthly TAN report. I'll call up Finance Director Dawn Savo or CIO Mr. Timniak. Dawn, thank you.
The report that you received in your packet, if you look at the last week on page four, the last week of the fiscal year, you see a cash balance estimated for $25.9 million. And then if you look further, we always go two weeks out because there are some bond payments due at the beginning of July, you see the estimate is $12.39 million. This includes any up-to-date estimates that we have. This does not, however, include any cash anticipated yet from the ARPA funding because it wasn't determined when we were getting that at the time this report was done.
Thank you, Ms. Savo. Any questions for the Finance Director on the TAN report? Nope. Excellent. Thank you, Dawn. Next item on the agenda is under Mayor's Report. Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Chairman. Regarding the COVID update, Town Hall offices remain fully open and appointments with the public are no longer required. We still continue to encourage any residents who can do business online to do that or through the email or over the phone if those methods are possible. Visitors and staff who are fully vaccinated are not required to wear masks or socially distance. Those who are not must continue to wear a mask and maintain social distance. Regarding the vaccination update, we have vaccinated 12,221 individuals in Stratford clinics. The state is releasing information about how many individuals are vaccinated in all Connecticut communities. And as of June 9, 2021, 56.19% of the town's population had been vaccinated for the first dose. As part of the Vaccine Equity Partnerships Program funded by the Connecticut Department of Public Health, the Stratford Health Department has transitioned their regular weekly COVID-19 vaccination clinics at their main site to a community-based pop-up clinic format this month. Those interested may register for a vaccine appointment in vams. Walk-ins are also welcome. The Stratford Health Department is partnering with Hartford Healthcare and Yale New Haven Health, as well as local organizations including Sterling House, Stratford YMCA, the South End Community Center, among others, to promote the COVID-19 vaccine and host neighborhood-level clinics. Outreach will focus in the areas of town that have experienced a disproportionate burden of disability and disease due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Clinics recently took place at Stratford Baptist Church last Friday and Saturday and at the South End Community Center last week. There are upcoming clinics scheduled on July 1 at the Stratford YMCA from 4 to 7 PM, on July 7 at Lord's Kitchen at 2000 Main Street in Stratford from 4 to 7 PM. Information on more pop-up clinics are available as they are planned. And if you have any questions about the clinics, you are more than welcome to contact the Health Department by phone or email at health@townofstratford.com. We have been in the gray level for a few weeks as the state is maintaining its color-coded weekly COVID-19 alert map. The town of Stratford has moved from the red level to the yellow level and now to the gray level for the last two weeks. This means that we have fewer than five new cases of COVID per 100,000 people. On Monday, May 31, we celebrated a special Memorial Day Parade and event and as we resume the great tradition we have here in Stratford of honoring those who have made the ultimate sacrifices at the altar of freedom so that our nation might survive. Special recognition goes to VFW Post 9460, the Town of Stratford Public Safety Team, staff, and countless volunteers and participants who made our ceremony at Academy Hill and a Memorial Day Parade, a memorable one. I don't have the date. Thank you, Mike, the date of the EMS award. EMS and the fire staff were awarded and honored by St. Vincent's. Three Stratford EMS providers and one Stratford Fire Captain was recognized in the ceremony in May that was put on by St. Vincent's Medical Center as part of their annual EMS Values Recognition Awards. Full-time paramedic Dane Dorta, EMT John Tomeo, EMT Volunteer Supervisor Chris Mancini, and Stratford Fire Department Captain Jermaine Atkinson were honored with St. Vincent's Medical Center's EMS Value Recognition Award. And they were recognized as those who go above and beyond. These awards are given to EMS workers for exhibiting the St. Vincent's EMS core values of integrity, compassion, accountability, respect, and empathy while providing patient-focused and selfless service. Our congratulations go out to these outstanding public servants. The month of June is Pride Month, and I was pleased to host our Pride Month ceremony at Town Hall on the morning of June 1 as we recognize the contributions that the LGBTQ community make to our town. I would also like to thank Dr. Gary Blick of Healthcare Advocates International who delivered remarks, the Reverend Pat Coller of the Christ Episcopal Church who delivered our invocation and benedictions, our own Jeff Littke of Human Resources who raised the pride flag in Town Hall with his husband Drew Cosenza, and Sage Spurling, Angel Ortiz, and Jenna Sargent, members of Stratford High School's Gender and Sexuality Alliance for sharing remarks with us, and to the Town Chairman, Chris Pia, for joining us. After our flag ceremony, many of us walked to the Healthcare Advocates International Building on Main Street to assist with the raising of their pride flag. Please join us in celebrating the Pride Month throughout June, affirming our commitment to protecting the civil rights of lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender residents, and collectively celebrating their vital contributions in Stratford, making our community a greater one than it already is. This year, in association with Restaurant Week, we issued the Golden Fork Award. The award was presented from a drawing of submitted receipts from Stratford Restaurants dined during Restaurant Week. Congratulations to Stratford resident Tricia Jekyll Heatherington on winning the Golden Fork Award this year. Tricia dined at many restaurants, but the whiskey barrel receipt was the one that won her $1,000 worth of gift cards and goods from Stratford Restaurants. So it was good to eat out and submit your receipts on Restaurant Week. For the first time in a long time of the grand tradition, Juneteenth of Fairfield County Inc. held their annual awards reception right here in Stratford during a ceremony and reception recognizing the importance of service of several individuals and businesses, and that was held at Short Beach on May 15. I was honored to be on hand to recognize the contributions of the organization and their distinguished honorees and look forward to continuing collaboration with them in the future. Last month, I joined with the Board of Education Chair Allison Delbeni to host a welcoming reception for Dr. Uwe Osunde as he prepares to take the helm as the new superintendent of the Stratford Public Schools on July 1. Thank you to all the members of this Town Council, the Town and Education Administrators and staff that came out to give a warm welcome to Dr. Osunde as he readies to take over. On May 27, I joined the dedicated volunteers of the Connecticut Air and Space Center for a ribbon cutting ceremony to celebrate the opening of its annex for a public display of historic military and civilian aircraft restored by those who volunteer at the center. The grand opening of the Connecticut Air and Space Center was May 29, so please stop by and check out the terrific historic items on display that preserve and honor Stratford's unique and unmatched aviation heritage in Connecticut. This past, the weekend before last, I attended the unveiling of the New Kindness mural that had been completed at Short Beach Concession Stand, kicking off the terrific Be Kind Campaign in association with the Ben's Bells Project, extending the message that in any given moment, the kindness you offer to yourself or to others affects what happens in the very next moment. Short Beach Park is now the first park and waterfront facility designated as a Be Kind facility. Thanks go out in particular to Bob Jekyll and Karen Dayton of the Short Beach Commission, Cody Foss of Ben's Bells Project Connecticut, Councilors Chris Pia, Bill O'Brien, Greg Kahn, and Caitlin Shake for joining us for the unveiling. On June 4, it was a special night as we followed through on an action by this council at the Braquette's opening game as we honored the late, great Hal Baird, naming the press box for him and presenting his wife Martha with a plaque commemorating him. Hal leaves behind a tremendous legacy which Stratford will continue to honor. The event took place on the opening night of the Braquette's 75th season. We were pleased to see the return of the Main Street Festival on Saturday, June 5 as local vendors, organizations, and entertainers lined the streets from Stratford Center to Stratford Avenue. We thank the Rotary Club, PA, for their continued work in presenting this festival, and we thank Milford Bank for their continued sponsorship in making the return of this event successful for everyone and fun for anyone who came out. On June 10, we had a ribbon cutting at Bethlehem House for their second multi-story home of supportive housing that's run by Catholic services. Families can stay for one year to transition to permanent housing. Bethlehem, too, needs a roof, and Stratford Rotary donated $10,000. GAF's Vice President Dan Sant, who's a local resident and planning commissioner, is donating the roofing materials, and the mayor's charity will pay any additional labor costs that aren't covered by the $10,000 from Rotary. Last week, I was pleased to join host Ashley Zane from the Connecticut Business and Industry Association podcast called BizCast to discuss how Stratford came together during the COVID-19 pandemic and the strategies we used to support local businesses along the way. The podcast is available to view on cbia.com, my Facebook page, or the Town Web page. The Yukon Environmental Action Award, we were proud to receive recognition from the University of Connecticut for participating in their environmental corps. Stratford engaged in the Brownfield Corps and received community assistance while training and engaging undergraduate students in real-world experience. Our plaque has a 2020 date on it as the event was planned for last summer for the recognition but was canceled in consideration of COVID pandemic. Our particular thanks goes out to our Conservation and Environmental Superintendent Kelly Kerrigan for her work in facilitating this program. As for economic development updates, the Army Engine Plant, the Record of Decision was signed by Connecticut Deep and the Army, and we are waiting of acceptance of the stewardship permit by the US Army that was issued to them by Connecticut Deep. On May 26, Green Thumb was approved for zoning to move into the Aptar Building on Access Road, and Green Thumb is a developer of marijuana, and they are currently in West Having, and they will be relocating soon to Access Boulevard. 775 and 975 Lordship Boulevard are under contract. 975 has a 137,500 square foot building planned, and 775 is the associated parking for that spot, for that building. Exit 33, the northbound rample opened this fall with the southbound entrance opening in June of 2022. In complete streets, the public meeting was held on the 8 at Bird's Eye to review the 60% design. It's also on the Town website. Planning met with town public safety officials this afternoon as they raced concern over the one-road bike lane under the railroad pass. Following the meeting, the consultant is getting ready to submit the 90% design to DOT for their review and approval. And the 1,000 East Broadway Center School property, RFP, was released, and the submissions are due on June 22. For upcoming events, Father's Day weekend, on the 19th, PAL is hosting a picnic at Short Beach. There will be food games and family fun. The event is free, but attendees must register. To register, they have to email officerlong@jlong@townofstratford.com. The Farmer's Market at Paradise Green opened today. I hope you had a chance to go in between the raindrops. And those attending the Farmer's Market are welcome to park at the Stratford Baptist Church. As a matter of fact, this Baptist Church has agreed to contract with the town for any of our activities on the green, except for when they are holding church services, and we can utilize their back parking lot. The Summer Concert Series, performances on Tuesday starting at 7 o'clock on Paradise Green. Again, you can use the Stratford Baptist Church parking lot if you'd like. The first show is June 22, and the performance is by The Cold Ones. Juneteenth recognition will be this Friday morning at 9 o'clock. We will have a ceremony like we did last year on the steps of Town Hall observing Juneteenth. Juneteenth commemorates the end of slavery for the United States and is the oldest public celebration of the end of slavery. At our event, we expect to have guests from the Juneteenth of Fairfield County raise a Juneteenth flag at Town Hall. Our Fourth of July fireworks celebration will return this year and is scheduled for Short Beach Park on Thursday, July 1. The rain date is Friday, July 2. This year, the fireworks display will be for Stratford residents only. The park will be open to Stratford residents only. Of course, you can observe fireworks from wherever you can see them. Blues on the Beach will also be returning this year, and it will take place on Saturday, June 24 with more details to follow. And as far as staff news, I'm welcoming Julia Mahoney, who was an intern last year in my office, and she is returning as a part-time assistant. Julia is in her junior year studying public management at Plymouth State University in New Hampshire. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll open it up to the council for questions for the mayor. Anybody have any questions? Greg.
Sorry? Go ahead. I'm forgetting about this thing.
Thank you, Chris. Mayor Hoedick, first, I have three, if you guys can bear with me. The first is regarding Gladys Ramos, appointed a lifetime, that opens a position on the library board. It's an observation that we should work together to assure that that board has representation of all members of the community, if you will. Whoever serves on any committee or board, they need to be professionally qualified and experienced, and I hope we can identify someone appropriate to fulfill Gladys's legacy.
Do you have a question for her?
It wasn't much of a question, but, Juneteenth, thank you for Short Beach hosting their event. Thank you for the flag raising. The Juneteenth Parade is, I believe, Saturday, this Saturday, the 19th. Joanne Butler, who's been the organizing secretary of Juneteenth for Fairfield County, Mayor Hoedick gave Ms. Butler, I think we call it accommodation or recognition, a couple of years ago. And again, observation, I hope all members of the community have an opportunity to go to Bridgeport and participate in the parade, if not the flag raising ceremony that Ms. Mayor Hoedick mentioned.
Greg, do you have a question for her, though?
Here's the one question.
Okay.
Regarding Army Engine Plant, the Record of Decision is a good step forward. Can we give a, can you provide a general overview of when we would expect aspects of that property to be released for public use?
Through the chair.
Go ahead.
Thank you. The Record of Decision is the document and the agreement between the Army and Connecticut Deep that starts the transition of the property from the Army to the developer of record. The developer of record has been chosen, eight years ago at least, maybe nine, to be Point Stratford Renewal. In the Record of Decision document, there is a six-month transition period before the conveyance can take place. In the Record of Decision document and the agreement with Point Stratford Renewal and the Army, the developer has a series of extensions, three to be exact, of 30-day extensions that they can initiate should they need it. So from the Record of Decision signing, the developer of record needs to take occupancy or title to the property within nine months.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Any other questions for the mayor? Caitlin, Ms. Shake.
Thank you. Mayor Hoedick, it's good to see you. My question, surprising, is about COVID. You had mentioned that at the latest number that we have access to, the first dose was 56.19%. I'm just curious to know what the percentage of fully vaccinated residents are for Stratford.
Through the chair. I think to get the most accurate answer to that, I would ask the Health Department, and so I will get that answer to Councilwoman Shake tomorrow.
No problem. Thank you. Any other questions for the mayor? Nope? Okay, we'll move on. Thank you, Madam Mayor. We're going to hit committee reports. First item is item 4.3.1. I'll entertain a motion.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poisson.
I'd like to make a motion to approve item 4.3.1A. It's town bid 2021-41 for underground tank removals.
Motion by Councilor Poisson. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Shake. Seconded by Councilwoman Shake. Any discussion on this? Committee report minutes were provided to all the councilors. Ms. Camp.
Thank you, Chairman Pia. One, I'm always asking, what was the original allocation? If we bonded CIP money, or if we had an anticipated estimated cost of what some of these projects would be? If that reference could be included in the meeting minutes from the affected committee? So my question is, I see the low bid. How much did we expect it, or to cost?
Mr. Timniak? Or?
Renee Serra.
Renee, I don't know, or Ms. Serra from Public Works? If you don't have the information... Yeah. Okay. For that specific... So, Mr. Timniak, I want to make sure we come up to the podium before the recording. So, that's okay. If you don't have it, we can get back, but...
Council Chair.
Madam Mayor.
Each counselor has a copy of the CIP from last year. If you want to look in that document, it would reference the allocated amount.
I don't have it with me right now. We're conferencing right now, trying to figure out. I can run back to the office and get that for you, Councilman.
Any follow-up on that with you, Greg?
Yes, just to note that some of these projects aren't just in last year's CIP, and I'd rather not carry around six or as many. But one point is, if we could note what it is when we get the low bid, what year CIP and what the amount was, that would be very useful to validate the effectiveness of our estimates, and Chris, you can get me the information tomorrow.
I can tell you the PO won't get written unless there's funding in that account. So, it's the checks and balance on that to make sure that the project gets done. We can't submit a bid unless we have the money to go forward. If it's over the bid, we'd notify you that it's over the amount we have allocated for that project, and we'd request more funding.
Yeah.
Thank you.
If we do have discretionary funds, for example, if we set aside $300,000 and it comes in at 241, then the council may not have a direct role in deciding how that surplus of $60,000 may be expended, but we may have an opportunity to advise. So it's just that cognition...
I understand what you're asking.
So he'll follow up with you tomorrow on that one. Any other discussion under 4.3.1, item A? Nope? Okay. Call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed. Motion passes nine, zero. Next item on the agenda is item 4.3.2.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Councilor Poisson.
I'd like to make a motion to approve item 4.3.2A for the Benell High School floors. It's change order number one.
Motion by Councilor Poisson. Do I have a second? Seconded by Councilor Perillo. Any discussion on the item? Greg, Mr. Camp.
For Mr. Timniak, just the same request, just related to the previous item.
Noted.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. We'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed. Motion passes nine, zero. Next item, item B.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I can make a motion to approve item 4.3.2B to replace 12 lights in the Baldwin Center.
Motion by Councilor Poisson. Do I have a second? Seconded by Councilor O'Brien. Any discussion on the item? Nope? Okay. We'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed. Motion passes nine, zero. Next item on the agenda, under Town Attorney's Report, Town Attorney Hodgson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a very quick report for the month of May. Fees and costs recovered, $39,000. Workers' comp lien recovery, and we recovered $2,100 from a blight lien. We settled four cases, WPCA sewer backup or property damage claims, which was approximately $6,800. We also have four new liability claims, including your standard manhole cover, town tree limb, pothole. We also have one new tax appeal, and we opened up two blight files. There's a lot of other activity, but not recorded in this report. Thank you.
Thank you, Town Attorney Hodgson. Next item on the agenda is item 6.1.1, an ordinance appropriating, item 6.1.1. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Dancho.
Motion to move item 6.1.1, an ordinance appropriating $11,885,000 for various public improvements and equipment in the capital improvement program for fiscal year 2021, '22, and that the first reading of the above entitled ordinance be and is hereby dispensed with, as copies thereof have been previously furnished to each member of the town council, and that the same be adopted as a first reading and referred to the ordinance committee for a public hearing.
Motion by Councilwoman Dancho. Do I have a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Shake. Any discussion? So as everybody knows, we're moving the vote to the ordinance committee for further discussion and looking at. Anybody else with discussion on the item? Ms. Camp.
Thank you, Chairman Pia. As we move this item, these two items to ordinance, I would just like, I'm going to ask everyone's consideration for what I'll call neighborhood parks. We make a big investment in pickleball and tennis courts, very appropriate recreational activities for our residents, and we make a big investment in the golf course. Again, a valuable asset for the town. But we have a number of community parks in town that have, for lack of a better word, some neglected maintenance. I look at the Public Works Committee meeting minutes, and it does list many initiatives that are in progress, such as improving Great Park Meadow, pathways at Worcester and Clover Park. I thank them for that, moving those items forward. But in regards to the CIP and our allocation of investments in our infrastructure, that we consider putting more money into the local, what I call neighborhood parks across the town, so that those neighbors can walk and have family activities to complement the athletic activities that we've typically invested in. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Camp. Any other discussion on the item? Councilman O'Brien.
Mr. Chairman, on that topic, I'd like to just note some of the comments by Chad Esposito, Park Superintendent, at our Parks and Recreation Commission meeting last week. Columbus Avenue totlot is nearing completion. The Nichols School Playground, equipment has been ordered and expected to arrive in any 10 weeks. Stony Brook Swing Set has been ordered to replace the existing structure. High Park, the new swing set and equipment has been ordered to replace the existing structure. Lordship School, the new swing set and equipment has been ordered to replace the existing structure. Great Metals Park, I think Mr. Camp mentioned, Motel Park cleanup is happening. Short Beach Park, work will be done to repair the basketball courts and obtaining quotes to change the two basketball courts and tennis courts to post-tension concrete. Julie Low Park, the existing asphalt walk paths will be redone, and other work will be done, and that's part of Mr. Esposito's. I just wanted to bring that to Greg's attention. Thank you.
Any other, any other councilors on this discussion item? I agree, we'll look at this through ordinance. Everyone's input and considerations are going to be taken into effect. I agree, improving parks, improving playgrounds, improving everything in town is great, and I'm glad to see that. I wasn't aware of that, Mr. O'Brien, so thank you for that update. Any other discussion on the item?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Councilwoman Shake.
Thank you. I just want to also, in case everyone here is not aware, for the Longbrook Park Commission, I am chair and Councilman Perillo is vice chair, and for the last four, five months, we've had public safety concerns. It's historically been in the park, but we have made the requests, and we've had our public safety director, Mr. Chicorelli, attend almost every meeting that we've had, and we had the understanding that he and Mr. Perillo, through public safety, were going to put in requests for funding specifically for video camera surveillance, because we have, unfortunately, a lot of activity. So I didn't see anything itemized under parks for Longbrook Park, but I just want that to be in the back of everyone's mind. You're free to look through all of the minutes that we have for Longbrook Park. They're quite detailed, and I hope that we can continue to have the conversation during ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, any other discussion before we move it? No? Okay. We'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed. Motion passes nine, zero. Next item on the agenda is item 6.1.2. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Dancho.
Motion to move item 6.1.2, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of $11,685,000 in bonds of the town to meet the appropriation for various public improvements and equipment in the capital improvement program for fiscal year 21, '22, and pending issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowings of such purpose, and that the first reading of the above entitled ordinance be and is hereby dispensed with, as copies thereof have been previously furnished to each member of the town council, and that the same be adopted as a first reading and referred to the ordinance committee for a public hearing.
Motion by Ms. Dancho. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Camp? Second on that. Any discussion? Nope?
Greg, Camp.
Greg, go ahead.
Thank you, Chris. For the ordinance committee, can we have a copy of the Connecticut statute 14300G that's referenced? I think that'll describe some of the safety requirements of the golf carts.
We're not on that.
Oh, we're not? I certainly apologize.
So, back, still on, still on CIP? Anything, any other discussion on that one? Nope? Okay. We'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed. Motion passes nine, zero. Next item on the agenda is item 6.1.3. I'll entertain a motion.
Chair.
Councilman Perillo.
I'd like to make a motion to move the golf court to the ordinance.
Motion by Councilwoman Perillo. Do I have a second to that?
Laura Dancho, second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Dancho. Discussion. So Greg, I'll answer your question.
Apologies to all.
No worries. The section 203-115 of the code, I know was presented as in minutes of the public safety, but I'll, we will get it, we will get it to you.
For the whole group?
Yes, to the whole group. No problem.
And just to note that golf courts, this applies to the entire town.
This is an ordinance, yes. So for clarification purposes, this is for the entire town, and this is actually setting an ordinance for registration fee, of which will be given back to the Traffic Division with the hopes that we discussed the public safety of buying more cameras, buying more things, but it is townwide 100%.
Thank you.
No problem. Any other discussion on the item? Nope? Hearing none. We'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed. Motion passes nine, zero. Next item on the agenda is item 6.1.4. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. O'Brien.
Yes, I move 6.1.4, an ordinance creating an American Rescue Plan Act Fund.
Motion by Councilman O'Brien. Do I have a second to that?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Shake. Any discussion? Ms. Savo? Just for clarification purposes, I think I, if I can have you come up? Dawn, just for clarity, this is to create a line item for the ARPA funds, is that correct?
Yes, so our auditors, I reached out to our auditors about how to handle that, because as you know, we're getting a direct allocation from the U.S. Treasury, and then we're also getting funding that was allocated to counties, that's coming through the state. It's multi-year funding. That means it's not for one fiscal year. It's going to go over many fiscal years, and the best way to handle that is to create a separate fund where we can track the expenses and the revenue.
Excellent, thank you. I just wanted for clarity. Any further discussion on the item?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Camp, and then Ms. Shake.
Thank you, Chairman. Dawn, do we have, there may be rules regarding how these monies can be spent. Do we have clarification?
Well, there's an interim final rule that came down from the Treasury. It hasn't been finalized yet. I'd be happy to send it to you. It's 150 pages.
You good, or?
So the answer is yes, there are rules.
And you're waiting on further clarity?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Shake, you had a question?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You said that the money that we're going to be receiving for the American Rescue Plan, over how many years is, are we looking at? Five years? Is it a five-year plan?
Oh, I hate to give an answer on that, but I think it's, I think it's three, but I can clarify that. It's three to four years. Oh, Mayor.
Madam Mayor.
Through your council chairman, it needs to be expended by 2024.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on the item? Okay, hearing none. We'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed. Motion passes nine, zero. Next item on the agenda is item 6.1.5. I'll entertain a motion.
Chair.
Councilman Perillo.
I'd like to move 6.1.5 to ordinance.
Motion by Councilman Perillo. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Councilwoman Shake, thank you. Any discussion? So, I'm going to have Mr. Eng come up. Ron, are you available?
Yes, sir. Yes, to answer any questions from an HR perspective. So as everybody knows, the statute, excuse me, per the charter, we have to look at this, and it has to be set by July 1st of the, in the year preceding a mayoral election. And a town attorney, Florick, correct me if I'm wrong on any of this, this was, this was written in the 2008 charter revision, correct? That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So I have HR Director Ron Eng up here for any of the councilors who have a question on the proposed salary, and I will open it up for discussion to the council. Ms. Camp.
Thank you, Mr. Pia. A few questions, Ron, please. The section is 2.2.5?
Yes.
Is that how we, is that how we came up with the annual increase?
That's what the, that's what's in the chart, as the, I think your email request was, and Attorney Florick responded back to explain how that functionality came into play. It was prior to my becoming and deployed by the town.
Salary is one aspect of anyone's total compensation, and you've provided us with a list of comparative salaries from neighboring towns. Items such as vacation days, bonuses, expense accounts, use of town vehicles, et cetera. Can you provide some clarity over the comparative compensation packages of Stratford versus the neighboring towns?
In general, yes, I can. I spoke to, excluding City of Bridgeport, but the other surrounding municipalities that are around us, Fairfield, Trumbull, Shelton, and Milford, and they all have use of a city slash town vehicle. They all get fuel, car insurance, or a car allowance, with the same benefits from that perspective. They have total use of those vehicles for their use, because they're basically available 24/7. They have varying types of vacation. Some of them have, you know, unlimited PTO, if you will. Some of them have a defined benefit pension available to them, depending on how many years they stay with the municipality. They have some increases built into their wages for future years. Several of them had that listed in their budgets, as well as saying that's part of what they go. A lot depends on some unions that they have, that they compare themselves, typically the supervisors' union of increases. So some were at 2%, some were 2.5% built in for time that the elected officials in office.
Go ahead. Another question, Greg?
Yeah, just, so aside from salaries... Yeah, just, so aside from salaries, the benefit package, non-salary aspect, Stratford is not richer than our neighbors. You'd say that they're different, but they're in the same ballpark?
When you say richer, I'm not sure what you mean by that.
Someone may give unlimited sick time, or, excuse me, unlimited PTO days, you mentioned. Some may limit it. Some may say you have an unlimited expense account. Some may require preapproval of requiring evidence of restaurant receipts, et cetera. So when you look at the total benefit package, Stratford is in the same ballpark, or are we under? I'm trying to put the salary in perspective with the entire benefit package with Stratford versus its neighboring municipalities.
Well, we're pretty close from that perspective. Some of the salaries are in the one forties level with, you know, similar benefits that we have here. Some of them have a higher retirement option. You know, again, with the defined benefit plan, which we don't offer to our outwilled employees or elected officials, that's a pretty significant benefit, you know? So their salary may be a little bit lower than other towns, not lower than our town, but by being offered a defined benefit plan that you can get at age sixty after ten years of being in the elected official is a pretty huge benefit to get. So it's pretty much better than our pensions that we have for predominantly all of our unions right now.
And, Chris, could I ask a question of Attorney Florak?
Go ahead.
Attorney Florak already answered this in response to earlier inquiry, but the section in the charter, two point two point five, has a sentence that says no interim increases. And just for the public, could you explain the intent of that sentence?
Yes, Councilor Ken. When we, and just to have everybody have the background of this, that came in in the charter revision of two thousand and eight, and I was the chairman of that charter revision commission. The intent of that sentence was to make sure that once the outgoing council set the salary package, that the council that came in with the newly-elected mayor could not change that. We did not want to foster partisan politics, and we feared that if we didn't cast the choice of the outgoing council in stone, that there would be temptation on the part of the incoming council to perhaps benefit the new mayor in a greater fashion if there were political alliances, or it was a friendly council, or conversely, if the council was adverse to the mayor, to punish the mayor by decreasing the salary or benefits. So as a result, that sentence was put into the provision in order to prevent that from happening. It would be this council that is going to set the package, and the reason for that is because there may be people from this council who will not be serving on the next council, so there will not be any temptation.
Thank you, Mr. Florak. Mr. Eng, just a quick question for you. Just, so the mayor's current salary as of right now is a hundred and ten, correct?
That's correct.
And I read that it was in two thousand and four, and we have not had an increase of the salary since two thousand and fifteen?
Two thirteen, I think it is.
Of the one ten, for clarity purposes?
Yeah, two thirteen. It went from ninety to one ten.
Okay. So it's been at least, we're talking seven going on eight years now for the mayoral, and we've had, since that time, I think, two or three mayors, so, in that seat. All right. I just wanted to make sure my numbers are correct. So I'm understanding of that, and, you know, I was reading, it was, in the last, I feel like in the last few months, there were a bunch of news articles around the state about it, but just looking at this even before we even brought it up, but I believe, you know, in this town, the mayor, forget whoever sits in that seat, I think is the hundred and forty-third ranked total compensated employee. So I do believe that whoever does sit in the mayoral seat come November third should have a higher compensation. I think it's appropriate, and being that it hasn't been raised since that time, I think is more than fair. So, any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
I'll get you next. Mr. Connor.
I just wanna make a general comment. It's good to, I think, I'm really, Ron, I think it's good that you did surveys for all the areas, but isn't it true that everyone is unique to that town, ever, all their benefits? I mean, you can say one's higher than the other, or closer, or whatever, but in reality, they're very different based on the individual towns, correct?
That's correct. For example, Milford's in New Haven County, which is not as the same as being in Fairfield County, so their base salary may be lower because of the stature of that whole county. So we're on the borderline of both. So, you know, Milford may not be as equal on a salary basis, but they make up for other areas as well as you point, Councilman.
Mr. Taveras, you had a question?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was very conflicted in this ordinance here, and my decision is based on the will of my constituents, and even though I can empathize how difficult the job it is being an installation head, the fact that even though the mill rate was lowered, even though it was minuscule, my constituents with the revalue are still paying between twenty and forty percent in taxes, I have to hear the hardship of that. The fact that along McGrath Court, those driveway aprons that are still damaged, that I've been talking about for over a year, that I was told is going to be to the responsibility owners, which I don't agree with. The fact that the Splash Playground was defunded. So my decision certainly isn't based on emotion or personal feelings, but mine is definitely the will of my constituents, and I think it would be disingenuous for me to feel that there should be an increase in salary when services are still lacking in District Three. Thank you.
Any other discussion on the item?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Poissons.
I was kinda shocked by that number you just read of where the mayor ranks in terms of salary within our own town. Where does she rank, again?
Again, according to the Connecticut Post article, it's a hundred and forty-third.
So that means over a hundred town workers and board of ed workers make more than the mayor. Is that correct?
Again, according to the Connecticut Post article, that's what I cited.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? No? Okay. Well, again, we're sending this to ordinance. We'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Councilman Taveras opposed. Motion passes eight to one. Next item on the agenda is gonna be item six point, six point two, under resolutions we're moving to. Six point two point one. I'll entertain a motion. Anyone like to make a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poissons.
I'd like to make a motion to approve item six point two point one, a resolution regarding the solar photovoltaic panel array at Stratford High School.
Motion by Councilman Poissons. Do I have a second to the motion? See, Councilman Perillo's hand. Second. Discussion on that. Mr. Taveras.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I'm gonna remain consistent for the very fact of abstaining because of the fact that part of my business deals with solar.
Understood. Any other discussion? I have Mr. Klee here, if we have any discussions for him. Mr. Ken?
Thank you, Chairman.
General question, or do you need Mr. Klee? He's from the company.
Possibly, because I'd like to ask about the million dollar that's mentioned at the end of the resolution. Is that a contractual limit within the Stratford High School project?
Mr. Tim, I can come up too, just in case we have a question on the financing.
Thank you, Chris. Good evening, everyone. Thank you, council members, and thank you for that question. The million dollars is the estimated very upper-end budget for the solar photovoltaic array at Stratford High School. Our anticipation is that the actual cost will come in much lower than that number, but for purposes of the grant from the Department of Administrative Services, they want to have kind of the highest proposed number for that entire solar project at Stratford High School.
Any other discussion on the item? Mr. O'Brien.
Approximately, what amount is reimbursed? What percentage is reimbursed by the state?
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Great question. I believe Stratford's reimbursement rate for this project is about fifty-nine point three six percent.
Pretty accurate. Any other discussion? No? Thank you, Mr. Klee.
Great.
We'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed?
One abstained.
Mr. Taveras abstains. Next item on the agenda is item six point two point two. I'll entertain a motion. Anyone like to make it? Someone could?
Laura Dancho.
Ms. Dancho. Ms. Dancho on the motion?
On item six point two point two, motion to accept a resolution regarding the twenty twenty-one Neighborhood Assistance Tax Act Tax Credit Program.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Dancho. Do I have a second to the motion? Seconded by Councilor Taveras. Any discussion on the item? Ms. Ken.
Thank you, Chairman. There's a note that the Sterling House Community Center is mentioned as one entity that's gonna be, I guess I'm not sure how this works. Can other private or public entities apply for this Neighborhood Assistance Tax Credit?
Mr. Tim Niack, do you wanna take that one?
Councilwoman Ken, you caught us in a period of transition here. Chris Bandeki used to run the NAA, so we're putting it together here. Dawn has those answers, though.
So, I'm sorry, can you repeat the question? Can you repeat the question?
Thinking of what other entities would be eligible to apply for the tax credits, they could be a private enterprise that meets a set of criteria, or a public enterprise. And Dawn, if somebody was inquiring about it, is the deadline closed, or could they still have an opportunity to submit an application, and who would they submit it to?
I, that, I'm not a hundred percent sure. I believe that this is, oh, go on, Mayor, I'm sorry.
Madam Mayor.
The Neighborhood Assistance Act has been administered by this town for several years, and by this council for at least the last three. This is the fourth year. There is a process through CDBG Administrator where there is a public hearing, and the applications are heard by that body, and then they are referred to, to this body for approval, and at that meeting, Sterling House Community Center was the only one who offered an application. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. All good? Any other discussion on the item? Nope? Okay. We'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed. Motion passes nine zero. Next item on the agenda, six point two point three. I'll entertain a motion. Anybody? Anybody wanna make a motion?
Laura Dancho.
Councilwoman Dancho.
Item six point two point three, motion to accept the resolution regarding Connecticut State Department of Education Summer Enrichment Expansion Grants.
Okay. A motion by Councilwoman Dancho. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Taveras. Any discussion on the grant? Nope? Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed. Motion passes nine zero. New business. The first item is item seven point one. I will entertain a motion.
Chair.
Councilman Perillo.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Crown Castle Towers, construction of their cell tower on the approved town property.
Motion by Councilman Perillo. Do I have a second to the motion? Seconded by Councilman O'Brien. Any discussion on the item? This came from Planning. The letter from Planning was included in the pony for the councilors. Any other, any other discussion? And we have the public hearing tonight.
Hi, Chris.
Do you have a question?
The planning letter included a recommendation for some monitoring or some subsequent action that could be taken. Additional oversight would be helpful to ensure that there's minimal tree loss and dirt road access to the proposed facility. They gave a favorable recommendation that it's consistent with the town's plan of conservation and development, P O C D, and it's gone through, it's been on our agenda for a while. If it's, I guess we're gonna accommodate what the planning commission recommended.
So the way I interpret it, Greg, is they sent a favorable for the movement forward of the cell. I think they added notes, but we're voting just on moving forward with the construction with allowing the lease. Right.
Excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other discussion on the item? No? Okay. Hearing none. We'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed. Motion passes nine zero. Next item on the agenda is item seven point two. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Dancho.
Item seven point two. A motion to amend the current memo of agreement with MetroCog currently acting as regional project administrator to add phase two preliminary designs with BSC Group as the consultant and DOT staff.
Motion by Councilwoman Dancho. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Taveras. Any discussion? So Sussmita's here, if you wanna just add in Sussmita.
Good evening, everyone.
If you wanted to just give a, does anyone have any questions for Sussmita on this? It's amending the contract for MetroCog, who are very good community partners. Greg? Yep.
This is related to which project, Sussmita?
Compli Street's Phase Two, on the other side of Barnum Avenue, until Paradise Green. So for Phase One, we had MetroCog serve as the project administrator, communicating with DOT staff, and making sure that we meet the project deadlines in a timely manner. And we'd like to continue the same partnership with them for the Phase Two, so that we can get this project through seamlessly with DOT.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Sussmita? No? Thank you, Sussmita. Appreciate it. All right. We'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed. Motion passes nine zero. Next item on the agenda is item seven point three. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. O'Brien.
Yes, seven point three. I'd like to send to ordinance for further review to consider and act upon amending chapter one forty-two of the town code, Town of Stratford Noise Control Ordinance.
A motion by Councilman O'Brien. Do I have a second? Ms. Ken? Okay. Discussion. So the reason we felt appropriate to put this on is we've been receiving the townwide a lot of noise complaints from constituents. I've talked to other councilors, we all have, so we felt it would be the right thing to do, to look at this again, maybe revise it, maybe to make, you know, keep it up to date. So Mr. O'Brien made the motion to send it to ordinance for further review. We'll work with the town attorneys on checking everything. There is a pretty lengthy noise ordinance already in a force right now, but it might be as simple as, you know, looking at it between both residential, commercial, crossover zones, decimal level, those items. So that's the reason for it being here. Any other discussion? Ms. Ken?
Just a comment that, you know, when it comes to monitoring noise, a lot of residents might say, I have an app on my phone that measures noise, and when I sent it to the X person at Town Hall, they said that's not submittable, if you will. So I just, if we take into consideration any effort made by residents to, in a conscientious way, try to document the noise that they were experiencing, and accommodate that in whatever in whatever ordinances or penalties or evaluations was their actual, that's what I'm trying to say.
We, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to look at it, 'cause I, I do know a few people had asked me about an app on their phone. Um, the problem from what I've been learning, and I'm still learning, is the calibration of that has to be accurate. So, um, we'll, we'll learn more through this as we go forward. Any other discussion? At this time, we're gonna send it to ordinance. No? Okay. Uh, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed. Motion passes nine zero. Next item on the agenda is item seven point four. I'll entertain a motion.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. O'Brien.
I move that the, um, increase of non-resident fees from $10 a year to $25 a year at the Baldwin Center, uh, be approved.
Okay. Motion by Councilman O'Brien. Do I have a second? Seconded by Councilwoman Perillo. Uh, any discussion? Is Tammy?
Mr. Chairman.
Uh, is Tammy here? Hi, Tammy. Maybe you can come up to give us a little clarity on this. Uh, Ms. Shake, go ahead. Do you have a discuss, um, yeah. We'll wait for Tammy. Wanna just tell us, kinda?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. Uh, so at a recent Commission on Aging meeting, well, past couple of meetings, we've been talking about membership, and that came up, that for as long as anyone can remember, the non-resident fee has been $10. And as you know, the Baldwin Center is a, a wonderful place of activity, and as we are about to unveil the facelift, it is going to be a sparkling, beautiful building. And so we really feel that it would be, the commission felt that it would be appropriate to, to raise the fee for non-residents.
Any, any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Shake.
Thank you. Um, I have a couple of questions. Going from, uh, $10 a year to $25 a year for, um, senior residents and neighbors and neighboring towns, I'm just, excuse, correct, for non-residents, I'm just curious what our neighboring towns charge their non-residents if they choose.
So, you know, everybody does it a little bit different, of course, 'cause this is New England, so every town looks at it differently. So Trumbull has a $20 non-resident fee, Shelton has a $10 non-resident fee, and Milford has a $30 non-resident fee. So it's really, you know, up to each municipality, it seems to me.
And I just have one more follow-up question. Um, out of, I guess, the membership that, uh, the Baldwin Center has, what's the ratio breakdown of our residents versus non-residents' membership?
Right. So right now, the membership number is a little bit fluid, because we didn't take memberships for the past year, because the center wasn't open. That just didn't seem right. So, going by our mailing list, we have about, uh, 1,200 people on that mailing list, and of those, 183 are non-residents. So that would be about 15%.
Sorry, I just have one more question. And were the current non-resident, uh, members also included in the discussion of raising those fees? Were they able to offer any feedback?
No, because the Commission on Aging are, are residents.
Any other discussion? Nope. Mr. O'Brien.
Uh, just Tammy, I can't remember. What's the resident fee?
Five, five dollars a year.
Understood. Any other discussion? Nope. Call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed. Motion passes nine zero. Last item on the agenda is a motion for Stratford High School turf field for executive session request. So I'll enter, I'll ask a counselor to make a motion to enter into executive session.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Poissons.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, move into executive session to discuss, uh, Stratford High School turf field.
And can you?
It should be noted. And the town attorneys will give us a list of who should be included.
Mr. Claire?
Yeah, we should note that's for litigation purposes, and it should include attorneys, uh, Florick, Hodgson, and LeClaire, the mayor, obviously, uh, and Mr. Timniak.
And Mr. Downs, and the finance director.
And the finance director.
Any, uh, so a motion by Mr. Poissons. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Shake. Any discussion? Seeing none. Uh, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Chair votes aye. We'll go into executive session. Okay. Uh, I'll entertain a motion to, to return from executive session. So moved? Councilman O'Brien, do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, seconded by Councilman Taveras. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? Motion passes nine zero. I'll entertain another motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. O'Brien.
I make a motion to approve the field turf proposal to repair the Stratford High turf field in the amount of $606,315.
Motion by Councilman O'Brien. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, the seconded by Councilman Taveras. Um, do I have a second to the mo, excuse me? Do I have any further discussion? All those, uh, seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed. Motion passes nine zero. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'd like to make a motion.
Mr. Perillo. All those in, uh, second? I need a second.
Second.
Mr. O'Brien. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Chair, thank you all.